I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming back tonight and adjusting to the time in order to let the parents and teachers participate in conference night in the school system. So I also want to take just a quick moment to clarify what happened at the end of the meeting, the first night of special town meeting. We did not know about school conferences until the FINCOM chair, and I think is everybody who was here Monday night saw alerted us all to that fact, which was at approximately 10:00 PM. That shouldn't happen, and it won't happen again. It's not fair to you all as town meeting members. This is your meeting, and we shouldn't be deciding things on the fly like can we, when we adjourn and when we are going to resume a meeting. So you have my assurances, and I've spoken to the facilities department, town clerks, the town manager. I'll speak with the school department as well, so we all make sure, so everybody makes sure that something like that is known in the future, and I appreciate your indulgence on that. So, thank you. All right, so we are going to pick up with Article 14, and that is a motion by the FINCOM Chairman Bodenhoffer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the Finance Commission that the town appropriate the sum of $40,000 from free cash to pay the costs of entering into a contract services to perform a superintendent of schools search.
And I believe Ms. Sullivan is seconding.
Yes.
And Ms. Bodenhoffer, you're also going to explain why there's a difference between the yellow sheet and the actual motion, I believe, in your comments.
Madam Moderator, the yellow sheet was put out before the FINCOM meeting. The original school request was for $60,000. Subsequent to that request, the school committee voted to make a change to their plan for the superintendent search, and so then when the FINCOM took up the question and there was a member of the school committee in attendance at our meeting, we agreed to, the FINCOM recommended that we appropriate $40,000 at this time with the understanding if that is not sufficient funds, then the FINCOM would support the schools going forward with a reserve fund transfer. However, we do think that it will likely be enough money to accomplish the goal.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. Anything further on that motion? I'm asking for you.
Oh, no, not for me, sorry.
All right. Any other on the motion? Ms. Homewood.
Debbie Homewood, District 3. Where is this coming out of the school committee's budget?
Sorry.
That's okay.
There you go, Madam Moderator.
But somebody explain to me why it's not in the school budget, or why it doesn't go into this 55% of the budget that goes to the schools.
Ms. Bodenhoffer, do you want to take that?
I can certainly start that question, and I don't know if the schools may want to speak to this as well, but when the school budget was created in February of 2023, FY24, we did not know at that point that we would be searching for a new superintendent.
May I? You can. Let me see if anybody, does someone from the school committee want to, that's the answer, right? Yeah. Follow-up, Ms. Homewood?
Yes, so we don't have any wrong terms. Slush fund, something that the school has for, all right, we all hate that term, something for emergencies, there's no money in the $58 million that can cover the school.
I see, I see the chair of the school committee going right over there. Anything, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Langone?
Judy Langone, District 8. Did we do this motion Monday night for $60,000?
No.
We did not get to it.
We did not get to it.
So it's actually being reduced from 60 to 40?
So what happened even before town meeting started on Monday is the FINCOM and representatives from the school committee had met and agreed to reduce the amount down to $40,000. So the motion, in, by the motions meeting, we knew it was going to be 40,000.
Well, I'm a little bit confused because I was watching the school committee last night and the discussion going on, and I thought I saw or heard 110,000, then 100,000, and then 99.99. So that's why I was just a bit confused, but thank you.
I actually can answer that question because I watched the school committee meeting last night as well, and that is about another article, that's about the school services study.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, no worries. Ms. Mazzola. He's coming around, or you can come up here. Thank you. He's coming on.
There we go. Ms. Moderator, I just wanted to comment to Ms. Homewood's question that the schools, just for a point of reference, 82% of our budget is salaries. So when we divested the facilities department and we had to be made a joint facilities, we lost those areas, you know, snow and ice and things like that that can be kind of shifted around. So at this time, 82% of our budget is encumbered salaries.
Thank you. Oh, and Ms. Mazzola, for the, for people who don't know who you are.
Ann Marie Mazzola, District 8, and Chair of the School Committee.
Thank you. Anything else on the motion? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. It's a majority vote. All those in favor of appropriating the sum of $40,000 from free cash to pay the costs of entering into contract services to perform a superintendent of schools search, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Article 15 by the FINCOM, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the Finance Commission that the town appropriate the sum of $100,000 from free cash for contract services to perform a comprehensive review of student services. And on the motion?
And Ms. Sullivan is seconding that motion, but on the motion, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Thank you. This is actually the article that Ms. Langone was referring to that has changed since the pink sheet was sent. The pink sheet originally called out $60,000 for this. The FINCOM just had a meeting starting at 5:30 this evening. Members of the school committee attended and stated that the, there are a few reasons to believe that the cost of the comprehensive study that they would like to do on our student services, which includes special education, it includes nursing, it includes guidance, it includes English language learners, it includes our 504 accommodations, all of those things that the $60,000 that was originally appropriated, that was originally suggested, would not be sufficient for that based on the, partly based on some of the numbers that they received from their elementary school study request. And so with that new information, the school committee voted last night to increase their request to $100,000, and the FINCOM voted four to one in favor of increasing that to $100,000. So that is the motion before you from the Finance Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. Mr. Brody.
Steve Brody, District 4. Could someone please explain what this is all going to be for, please?
Yeah, it's a great question, Mr. Brody. Ms. Mazzola, do you want to take that?
Yeah, Ann Marie Mazzola, District 8, Chair of the Norwood School Committee. This study would be looking at all of our student services, so it would be an all-encompassing study, looking at special education, as Ms. Bodenhoffer alluded to, of students who have 504, students who have nursing plans, our guidance, our mental health services, all of the student services. We would be looking for efficiencies, we would be looking to make sure we're actually providing the services that we're supposed to be legally, we would obviously be looking for savings, you know, if we can, if there are ways we can combine, we can, we, you know, all of those things would be open in this audit. We are looking to make sure that we are providing the services to our students in the most fiscally responsible way for the town.
Follow-up, Mr. Brody?
Yes, yes, thank you. Who would be conducting this survey, please?
Ms. Mazzola?
Sure. We would, this would be going out to an RFP process, so we would be putting this out and entertaining bids from vendors who provide this type of service. So it would be an independent audit so that we get the most unbiased look at our student services.
Hey, thank you.
In the back, Kevin? I think, there's actually two there, so you can kind of hang. Yeah, go ahead, no, go ahead.
Did some?
Can you identify yourself, please?
Carol McClay, District 8. Could you tell me if there's some, something precipitated this desire to do this comprehensive study? Was there some reason that we think we're not providing the services?
Ms. Mazzola?
So this has come out of several conversations in the town and within the school district. You know, a lot of times we are having discussions about having to increase spending and around specific populations for services. It is definitely, it has been discussed in joint meetings, the Budget Balancing Committee, several committees that have multiple elected boards on them, you know, just wanting to understand and to make sure that what we are providing is actually necessary, well, not, that's a terrible way to say it, that we are doing it appropriately, that we are doing it fiscally responsibly. So there have been a lot of conversations in that vein. We have also had conversations internally in the schools and on the school committee, also wanting to make sure, again, that we are providing the services that we're supposed to be providing and doing it appropriately. So kind of want to marry those two together in this audit to make sure that we're covering the things we're supposed to, while also listening to those in the town that, you know, may think that we're not, that things are not necessarily being spent well. So whatever way this audit comes out, it would be independent, and that way we can all be confident in what they're trying to tell us, if that makes sense.
Is there a follow-up? No? Is somebody, Ms. Rowley, you were just trying to, yeah, okay, got it. You were following my direction, I appreciate that, so I can see people in the back. Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Joe Greeley, District 6. Two questions. One, and I'm just approaching this from the dollars and cents of the motion, mechanically, if town meetings being asked to spend $100,000 on this specific article, and hypothetically the bids command, the RFPs, RFQs command, it's something less than that? From a mechanical standpoint, if funds are taken from free cash, what's the, what are the mechanics to send it back? And then I have a follow-up, please.
All right, I believe that the school, school committee chair will take that one, Ms. Mazzola?
Yes, we would like to ask for this amount of money with the full understanding that if we do not spend it, we give it back. That we would, it would go back into free cash. We have no intention of spending this on anything else except this audit.
Okay, and just to that point with that response, thank you.
Follow-up, Mr. Greeley?
Yes, actually, two.
Okay.
I said one, but now it's growing.
Okay.
So given that, like, and again, mechanically, is it, are we looking at any surplus out of this 100,000 coming back at the end? Like, at what point does it come back? Is it, do we have to wait for the fiscal year-end, or how does that work?
Ms. Mazzola, do you know? Mr. Mizuko knows.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So any unexpended funds from this year close out on June 30th, if they would be reflected in next year's free cash balance?
Okay, thank you. And that, given that, then we're assuming that this will finish up this year theoretically? One way, okay.
Ideally, yes.
Okay, all right, and then, thank you. And then the other, the other question I had was, you know, this is kind of an odd way to request money, and we all know that we're doing this in advance, town meeting, you know, we don't get too many shots at town meeting approval, so the timing is off. So because of that, we're actually asking for a specific amount of money for a specific purpose. So if we are going to put this out for RFP, despite what I just asked about surplus money coming back to free cash, it's almost a given to me, in my mind, that somebody's going to, most of the responders to the RFP are going to come as close to that $100,000 as possible. It's just a, and this is just common, everybody understands the timing of town meeting and getting an approval upfront, but it just seems like, you know, putting the, literally the cart before the horse, and if we're asking for $100,000 here, we're darn well going to spend a 99, maybe that's where the 99.99 came from, but we're going to spend it, it's probably not coming back.
Ms. Mazzola, do you want to respond?
Sure, just to respond to that, actually, so one of the reasons that we're coming forward with asking for an increase in what was originally in the warrant and in the yellow sheets is because we did get some money appropriated previously by town meeting to run an elementary study, and we did put that out to bid, and that, in that case, we did bid process, and that was publicly known, that it was $60,000, and the bids came back over that $60,000, and one of them by quite a significant amount more, almost double. So even having that public knowledge out there and knowing exactly what that amount was, the two companies that came forward were 67,000 and 118,000. You know, for the 67, obviously, we can find, you know, $7,000 in our budget, but, you know, finding $40,000 with a budget that's 82% salaries is going to be quite difficult.
Thank you. Right there? Kevin, move, right here, the, you're right there, yeah.
I don't understand.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Susan Davis, District 6.
Thank you.
I don't understand why every time something happens, we have to go outside and get a committee and pay all this money for committees, especially with the school. I don't understand that within the school, they can't form a committee, find out what is going on out there and what you need to really be successful. I just don't get it.
Is that a question that you want answered?
Yeah, I don't understand. It's always money for committees to do research.
Ms. Mazzola, do you want to take that, or Dr. Taylor? Who wants to do that?
I can, I can start. So one of the, one of the reasons that we're doing this is because it has come up in multiple committees, and it would, it is desired for us to do an independent audit of our services, that there was.
I know it's not adequate for some kids in the school.
Hold on, please, let her finish the response, okay?
There was, there is a desire among, amongst town meeting members, amongst some of the elected boards, for this to be an independent process, so that everyone can be comfortable and confident in the results, and that it's not, quote, "teachers auditing teachers," or something to that effect. I think we want to make sure this is as reputable as we can have it, so that no, there are no questions that, you know, there was something that we overlooked, or something that we didn't look close enough at because it's too close to home. So that, that has, that has been requested of us in multiple meetings, so that is something we took seriously and wanted to go outside and make sure that we had an appropriate and independent company do this.
Do you have a follow-up, Ms. Davis?
I just, I don't understand. I know a lot of things that are going on aren't adequate within the school system right now, here. So I understand why you want to make it better, and you need to make it better. It doesn't handle a lot of the kids' needs, what's going on now, so I just don't understand it, I guess.
Okay, that's fair.
I just, I don't.
That's fair. Ms. Palmetier, is that you, Becca?
Yeah. Brian Palmetier, District 8. The word comprehensive is the part that's getting me, because I understand you think of student services as one thing, but I'm trying to imagine going out and looking for expertise to evaluate some what I consider very different sets of services. So I guess it would help me to understand, Madam Moderator, the thinking behind, you know, how are you going to put out an RFP? Are you going to put out several? So for example, evaluating special education would be entirely different than evaluating nursing, or evaluating the strengths and weaknesses of guidance services. Yes, they're all certain services, but, you know, one is subject to federal and state laws, you know, the other one is, you know, a medical profession versus a special needs. So if someone could help me understand, I guess if I, from my thinking, it's almost like individual audits that need to be done. If I'm coming into a company and I'm going to evaluate their environmental program, or I'm going to evaluate their quality, I'm going to be coming at it from entirely different. So it's hard for me to understand how one RFP is going to cover all these. Can somebody kind of reassure me on that?
Do you want to, or, let's bring Dr. Taylor up. So this is for folks that do not know, she's going to identify herself as Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Taylor. So we're, Ms. Mazzola's bringing in the professional.
Good night, everyone. I'm Dr. Shereen Taylor, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Strategy. And the reason that we are asking for this audit is because when we look at everything that's happened post-override, we've done a really great job of evaluating our academic performance and refreshing curriculum, but we haven't had the opportunity to examine the other parts of the whole child. There are several companies, including WestEd, the American Institute for Research, and others, that do these kinds of audits, because in DSC statute and regulation, pupil personnel services actually encompasses all of those things. So, and we've gotten, quote, I did, was able to get a quote from WestEd as a company that could do this, personally my favorite, I think they do great research, but there are several that do it. So that's why we felt comfortable coupling all of those together, because there are people that do this work.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Palmetier?
I think that actually answers my question.
Okay.
Okay. The, I guess I would have just one quick follow-up.
Dr. Taylor, don't go away yet.
Because, you know, to kind of correct what I was saying about these being entirely different, I do like the idea that you have a nursing, say, that's working with special needs, that's working along with, you know, guidance and so forth, and to the extent that you can coordinate that, you know, that that would be helpful when you say, in thinking of it as a student services and how you're fulfilling that. So, I don't know, bravo?
Thank you, Mr. Palmetier. All right, I keep forgetting to look over here, and I'm going to look at, how about Mr. Guo right here? And then we'll go to gentleman way in the back, sorry, Kevin, we're going to, you're going to do some running.
Tom Guo, District 6. First question is, is this the first time this study has ever been done?
For our district, yes.
Dr. Taylor, you're going to take that?
She did.
For our district, yes.
So I see, yes.
Yeah. Second question, at the beginning of the motion, it said that covers 25% of the student body. That's saying that 75% of the student body doesn't need these services?
Dr. T-
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes. At the beginning of the motion, it says 25% of the student body requires these services. That means 75% do not. Now, are these just special needs? If you, I mean, you broad-based that, that students that require, other than normal academic...
So, yeah, so these are all students who are on IUPs, and they may be on IUPs for a variety of reasons. They include autism, it includes behavioral disorders, it includes medically fragile students. Oh, can you all hear me better now? Okay.
Ron, can you up her mic a little bit?
So it includes students in IUPs for a variety of reasons, including those who are medically fragile, those who have behavioral disorders, and those who have other disorders, including, or neurodivergent, including autism. So, and that number is actually disproportionate to the state. The state average is only about, I think, 19%. So the fact that we have 25, we have too many. So we, that signals to us that there's an over-identification problem happening.
So that was the camel that broke the straw back? That was a turning point?
One of them.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Guo is referred to, I believe, the yellow sheet is where it's talking about the 25% figure. All right, way in the back, Kevin? Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Carbone, District 9. Thank you for being on the school committee and for everything you're doing with the schools. I think it's very important as a parent of students. When you mentioned fiscal responsibility tied into this $100,000, I'm all for making the schools better, but something I've been hearing from actual educators, and I've seen it myself, is what are you doing for residency checks? Making sure the students that are receiving these services live in Norwood? And I'm not saying that as a witch hunt, I'm saying with empathy, if you, if you know, if it's a larger issue than people are making it else to seem, and you're finding that more people from other towns are coming, not that they have to leave, but is there a vehicle that receive funds from the state, or funds from somewhere that just aren't coming from Norwood's pool? Not using hearsay, I've seen it firsthand in my daughter's classes, and I've heard it from teachers that I don't think are lying, that they're not being heard as far as, it's not a McKinley-Vento thing where, they're not homeless, but they also don't live in Norwood. Homeless, I understand there's a reason why there's laws, but if you, are you looking into that? When you're looking at where this money's going for services, are you making sure residency checks? I'm not even aware of what the process is, not that I need to, I'm not in education, but when I hear this, and I'm a huge proponent of the schools and what you do, this is something that swirls in my head and many other people I know for where money's going, especially for services and high-need services. And I think every child should get what they need, I really do, but for our funds, how much is going to that?
Okay, so I want to just frame the question that you're asking to making sure that is part of what we're discussing. Are you asking if that particular aspect is going to be part of this study?
Yeah, so this study-
I think that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, if this is a comprehensive study of where services are going, is there any part of that that's saying, are they going to children outside of Norwood? And if so, is there a way we can highlight that and say, hey, can we get some funds for it? This is where, I don't know, I'm ignorant to how that's funded, not saying punish to students or anything like that. Could we get some money? Can the state help us? Can, is there any other avenue if you find that out?
Dr. Taylor, do you want to take that?
So, we do residency checks. One of the things, the constraints that we have is that various schools will, will check at different grade levels randomly to determine whether or not a student actually lives there via a variety of methods. Can't disclose that because it's student information. When we find that a student does not live there, does not live in Norwood, we do go through the appropriate measures, as determined by the law, to ensure that, you know, they're placed appropriately. Now, we don't have actual tracking data on how many students don't live there, because once we know and are made aware and can verify that a student does not live in the town, we go through the process of placing- the process of placing them in the appropriate district where they belong. Now, so for this project, in terms of can a consultant or company figure out how many students don't live in Norwood, it's not possible because that data just doesn't exist, right? Also, in terms of will the state help us, that was the last part of your question, I believe, they won't, which is why we have to be mindful and responsible in ensuring that we're serving the students that we're supposed to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kate, Ms. Neil Rizzo, right over there?
Katie Neil Rizzo, District Two. I'm standing to speak in favor of this article for one. We talk about how expensive student services are, and people question the school budget and how much we spend on these services every single town meeting since I've joined eight years ago. It comes up way more than it needs to. So for this to be questioned is, I assume that this would pass because it seems like an extremely reasonable and appropriate study to do. We have an extremely large number, extremely large amount of money that we spend on these services that are unfunded mandates, meaning that the state does not spend, does not give us money for it, but they require that we provide the services, as has been explained before. I would also think that this would help us by doing a comprehensive review and making sure that we are not only providing the service that we're, services we're legally required to provide, that it would help avoid future litigation, which would cost the school district a lot. I don't think that people understand how many times the schools are approached with legal challenges. Why is my child not getting these services? They should be, and the cost of that. The more comprehensive this study is, the more it's going to save us. This, spending $100,000 on this right now has the possibility, has a potential to save us $100,000 in a year or less. Special education services are extremely expensive and cost the town a lot. It would help with efficiencies, finding out if services can be combined or department, departmental groups can be combined, avoiding litigation, like I said. I think we, we hire an outside group also because it would be unethical for our school committee members, our administrators, some of which who have kids in the schools, to be possibly challenging, should my kid really be getting this service? Because they might not, they might say, you know what, I think I'll keep that one. You know, they have, it has to be an outside group. And the last thing I want to say is, when you, I think it's a little frustrating as a school supporter that we just passed five articles ago, we just agreed to spend $60,000 on a public safety staffing study, and nobody questioned that money. But this study is being questioned. Sometimes you have to hire outside groups, and this is one of the situations that you have to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Neil Rizzo. All right, in the back.
Chris Griffin, District Two, move the question.
And we have a second on that. Ms. Smith's seconded it. All right, moving the question, let's put it to a vote. Two-thirds margin. All in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Back to the main motion, that the town appropriate the sum of $100,000 from free cash for contract services to perform comprehensive review of student services. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All right, motion carries. That takes us to Article 16. Again, motion by the FinCom, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the Finance Commission that the town appropriate the sum of $50,000 from free cash to pay the cost of entering into contract services to perform a school department social-emotional enrichment pilot.
And that's being seconded by Ms. Sullivan, I believe.
Yes.
Ms. Bodenhoffer, anything on the motion?
FinCom has, is voting in favor of this motion.
Okay. And I do believe that this program also, there's a grant attached to it, so this is paying for part of the program. The grant amount, about $35,000 grant amount. On the motion, discussion. Mr. Lynch back there?
Ed Lynch, District Seven. Thanks for what you do. My question is, what does this program consist of?
Good question. All right, Dr. Taylor, you're, you're back to the podium. You may want to stay here for a while.
Cherise Taylor, Assistant Superintendent. So this will give us an opportunity to contract with an organization that conducts mentoring services for elementary and middle school services. So the two companies that we're currently looking at are City Year and Coaching for Change. These are organizations that train college students to serve as sort of student support specialists. So they work on building relationships with young people. Many of those students that they recruit are interested in education, or at the very least curious about it. So it serves as a career pipeline for us. These organizations are also deeply committed to hiring diverse staff, so this also helps us begin to diversify our teaching pool. And it also gives us an opportunity to share with our college, our high school students who think about, what are the things that I want to do when I go on to college? So it's, also has a career exploration component as well.
Follow-up, Mr. Lynch, or you're good? Okay. Anything else on, Ms. Homwood?
Debbie Homwood, District Three. I'm not questioning Article 14, which was new after the budget, but 14, 15, 16, and 17 all deal with the schools. I guess I'm not financially, I don't understand how the government runs that way.
Actually, I'm going to correct you, Ms. Homwood. I don't think that 17 is dealing with the schools.
All right, 14, 15, and 16.
Yep.
So, we don't, I guess I'm confused because we don't have any say on how the school budget is spent. And yes, we question, because I think that's why we have town meeting. So, all of these things weren't new, like the superintendent, unexpected consequence. Why are the other ones, we didn't know we were going to do these before, we don't have a contingency for any of this, we just have to keep coming back. And I don't think it's a question that isn't out there in the ether. It's, we have a $58 million school budget, and, and we add to it, and I don't know what these things are. I'm sure you're very efficient in running them, and I'm not questioning the emotional enrichment pilot program or the two before. I'm just questioning, why is it in this budget, not the school budget?
Okay, so this is a budget question. Dr. Taylor, if you know the answer, but I'm guessing that, you do, you do. Well, Dr. Taylor's taking it. She's, she's taking you guys home on this.
So this is new work to the district. So we have spent, post-override, a lot of time and attention has been spent on refreshing the curriculum so that we regain the academic rigor that Norwood has been proud of in the past. What we're finding is though, although we spent a lot of time working on Blooms, we have not spent a lot of time working on Maslow. And given the students that we have and the population that we have, we have to think about, how are we cultivating well-being, belonging? How are we building beloved communities in our schools? So that's new work, post-pandemic, that we are trying to address. So it, it's not accounted for in the current budget process, particularly given that the majority of our budget is on salaries. We don't really have the wiggle room. So I can tell you, personally, I've spent my first year, this is my second year in the district, I spent my first year in the district essentially raising money and getting grants to fund a lot of the pilots that we've been doing in the last year. And proudly, we've raised over half a million dollars in new grant funding, and will continue to do that. But it doesn't exist, which is why these, this, particularly in this year, these things exist as pilots, because if they do work, then we will work to incorporate them in the budget because we know that it's a valuable experience for our students.
Ms. Homwood, do you have a follow-up on that? No, you're good? All right. Ms. Stewart, and then Ms. Taylor.
Good evening. Teresa Stewart, District Four, also on the school committee. Just to address your question a little bit, too, about why now. So part of it has to do with when free cash is certified. So $2.9 million in free cash was certified. We have been discussing free cash and allocating it Monday night and now again tonight. And this, all these requests come from free cash. So in the process of the school committee working with the Finance Commission, with the process of the Budget Balancing Committee, when that number, $12.9 million of free cash was certified and recognized, part of the discussion was not only around the capital projects, not only the studies that you have approved on the general government side, but what else on the school side was necessary, but the funding was not available in the spring and is available now.
Ms. Taylor.
Jean Taylor, District Eight. I guess my, my question goes back to when we used to have 45% schools, I believe, and 55% town budget. It was, I'm sorry, it was just the opposite. That we, it was much easier, I think, to follow the money. Could somebody explain to me now, because it's all intertwined, to give us an easier pattern to follow so that we do know? I do seem like it's always, you know, I'll give to the schools because we need to educate our children. But it, it just seems like it's more now than it used to be.
Ms. Bodenhoffer, do you want to take that?
Yes, I guess I will.
If not, Mr. Plasko is willing to take it.
Let me start.
Okay.
It is a good question. I think that, as you mentioned, pre-override, we did have sort of a funding split formula that we would follow. Honestly, that was really our starting point for negotiations. We really never landed on an exact 55-45 split. Since the override, we have made several changes to the budget. There's now a facilities department, which is a standalone thing. So now there's a three-way split. We pulled the electric light department out into its own separate fund. We pulled water and sewer out into its own enterprise fund. So there's been a lot of moving pieces in the budget, and it is challenging to follow. That being said, even when we had the 55-45 split, there were often requests that came to town meeting in the fall, outside of the budget process, for both general government and schools. And, you know, Monday night, we considered, we appropriated money for the public safety staffing study. We appropriated money for the composting pilot program. Those are things that someone could say, well, that should have been built into the general government budget. And there wasn't room in the budget to do that. This is the school side of things. And it just so happens that it's on a different night than the other ones were done.
Is there any way of bringing a percentage where it was 55-45? Do we have any idea where we stand now? And can, need to make the statement because I think something was said that it seemed like there were too many questions asked on schools, but I think we ask questions on everything. And please don't ever feel discouraged to ask questions because, boy, I ask some dumb ones sometimes. Please don't ever feel like you can't stand up. I'm never comfortable standing up either, but anyway. So on 45, 55, if somebody could tell me where we're at now, if you have any idea.
Ms. Bodenhoffer, do you have that?
I don't have the exact number now, but I will say that the Budget Balancing Committee has been in conversations about what do we want to do going forward to allocate money? Is there going to be a new split, a three-way split? Are we going to do, continue what we've been doing during the override where we said, all right, this is everybody's baseline number, and you're going to go up three and a half percent with certain caveats for mandated expenses and things like that? So that is on our to-do list to come up with a process for that. I'm sorry, that's not a very satisfying answer.
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you. I think the school department's doing a wonderful job, and I'm not asking these questions for that reason. It's just to understand the budget, I think, in an easier, in an easier way.
Mr. Mizuko, I think you may have the answer to this.
He almost fell out of his Gia, he couldn't wait.
No, I don't know if I directly have the answer. I think to Ms. Bodenhoffer's point, that model of 55-45 isn't how we've split revenues for the last five years. So whatever the number is, is arbitrary. You have a general government budget of $38 million and a school budget of $58 million, but the revenues aren't split up that way. I think what's important to remember with these particular expenses, they're one-time expenses, and that's traditionally what we pay with free cash, are one-time expenses that normally wouldn't go into the operating budget for a couple of reasons. You want $100,000 study one year, you put it into the operating budget, your budget goes up like this year. You've got to remember that, hope the FinCom catches it next year and it goes up and down. It actually makes the tracking of the budget difficult over the years to see the peaks and the valleys. But they're also one-time expenses. We're certainly not going to do superintendent search every year, but if it was an annual process, you'd have to work that in your base budget. I think the Finance Commission would say, look, it, these need to be in your budget. You have third-party studies, which neither the town nor the schools have a significant amount of money in their budgets for consultants or for hiring outside studies. By comparison, we all in have a $215 million budget. I had more money for consultants when I managed a town with a $15 million budget. So that's why these are always coming to town meeting. And again, a special services audit, as well as a pilot program tied to grant funding, are just that, they're one-time expenses that wouldn't necessarily inflate the budget for a one-time program and go down. If they're going to be annual, you'll see them worked into the budget over time.
All right. In the back, right there. Yeah, right there, Kev.
Diane O'Toole, District Five. I motion to move the question.
All right, and that was seconded. Again, no discussion on this. Two-thirds vote. All in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion carries. That takes us back to the main motion on Article Six, and that's that the town appropriate the sum of $50,000 from free cash to pay the cost of entering into contract services to perform a school department social-emotional enrichment pilot. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
All right, motion, it's a simple majority on this. Motion carries. All right, Ms. Bodenhoffer, the FinCom gets to take a rest, and we move over to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Lane, on Article 17, you have a motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved that the town vote to amend Article 46 of the bylaws as printed in the warrant list, the phrase, or take any other action in the matter. Said revolving fund shall begin on July 1st, 2024.
All right, and Mr. Donnelly is seconding on the motion. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As some people are aware, this is for the extended-day program. Before the pandemic, around 2019, there were discussions about moving extended day from the school department to Norwood Recreation. To do that, you have to have established a funding mechanism. This article establishes a revolving fund to, to ensure that we do this properly. The expectation is that if this does move forward, that the Norwood Recreation would take over on July 1st of 2024. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. And Mr. Lane, good job studying your Roman numerals this Monday.
Yep, I looked up the Super Bowl from, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. On the motion, Mr. Hearn.
David Hearn, District Four. Madam Moderator, the motion says that we are amending Article 46 by adding a new Section D, and it tells us the title of Section D, but I haven't seen the text of Section D. Not in the motion. I don't think it's really in the bio- I don't think it's really in the by, in the warrant, because all the warrant says is, the bylaw provision shall specialize the programs or activities for which the revolving fund may be expended, but that hasn't been specified. And the departmental receipts that will be credited to the revolving fund, who shall be authorized to expend, any reporting, other requirements. So it's telling us what the subjects are, but we don't have the text that we're being asked to vote on. So I wonder how, how we're supposed to vote on something that we haven't actually seen.
Do we want Town Council to talk on that, or? So Mr. DeLuca, can you explain this one to us, please?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To the meeting, this was understood to be essentially a placeholder item. I understand that the language of the bylaw is not present. We're looking for the authorization to establish that, and it will be back before the body with the actual bylaw language.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. Follow-up, Mr. Hearn?
May I see the motion again, please? Well, I guess if we're amending the bylaw by putting in a title and nothing more, and that's the understanding of the body, there's probably no harm there. But if somebody thought they were voting to actually establish a revolving fund, we're going to have to do it before July twenty-first, July first, rather, 2024. So if that's, if that's the answer, then we're really voting to do nothing but put in four words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Yes, Mr. Easie.
Paul Easie, District Three. Just a question, why are they transferring this responsibility from the school department to the recreation department? I mean, when you, when I think of the school department, I think big staff, you know, big staff. When I think of the recreation department, I, I just think of small staff. Are they able to handle this responsibility? And two, can someone just run through what a typical day is in the extended day program? Thank you.
All right, Ms. Easie, I think Ms. Stewart, you're going to represent the school department on your first question, which is, why are we transferring this from the school department to the rec department?
Teresa Stewart, School Committee member, District Four. Thank you for the question. So the extended day program has been under NOR public schools for a very long time. And it's very complicated to be under our school system, and most school systems do not have an extended day program under their umbrella. As it currently exists, it has to comply with both DESI regulations and EEC regulations, the Early Education of Care. It's very complicated to need to be under both. And we have had a very strong commitment to our extended day program since I've been on the school committee in 2017. Our Superintendent, Dr. Thompson, has also been very committed to it. And over the last six and a half years, we have put in a lot of time of various school, district employees to try to grow the program. Six and a half years ago, the program only existed in the Savage Center and could only accommodate up to 250 kids. What we've done over the years is move it into the elementary schools, and it now can accommodate up to 550, so we've grown it. Currently, the program is a before-school at the Willett, as well as the five elementaries. And it is also after-school. There's two tiers, so children can go from two to six or two to four. So there are some options. Unfortunately, with everything with the pandemic, but even before, as Mr. Lane identified, we did start to explore this in 2019 before the pandemic. But during the pandemic, with everything going on, there just needs to be another way to provide the childcare to our community. And the school committee and the school district believes that childcare is utterly valuable and important, and our hope is that by transitioning it to the rec center under John Kenny, the director who has expertise in running childcare programs, and also then only being under the EEC umbrella, so no longer both EEC and DESI, we hope that the program can flourish and grow. At the school committee meeting last night, we did talk and we did vote as a school committee on a MOA, a memorandum of agreement, that the Board of Selectmen will be taking up on their meeting on, I believe, November twenty-eighth. But a lot of time and attention has gone into this transition and protecting the program, the fees, the staffing for the next year, and then under the direction of the rec center and the Board of Selectmen, they will hopefully be able to continue to grow. So your next question is staffing, I will defer to them, but I hope that helps you understand the history.
It does. Thank you very much.
Okay, and do we want to, on the actual, is the rec department ready to handle it? Are we, Mr. Mizuko, you're going to take that, or the rec, the rec department? Let's, let's have Mr. Kenny come up. And please don't forget to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Kenny, Superintendent of Recreation. So your question of staffing, we couldn't do it without the help of the present staff right now. I've met with them a couple times, just to introduce myself to them and get to know them a little better, look at things that are running great, things that we can tweak a little bit to make it better. There's no magic wand to take away the waitlist. I know it's a very high one. Our goal is to provide a very fun, safe program and try to take that waitlist down as we gather up more staff. We have a little bit more time than the school department in trying to resource, like recruiting more staff to bring on, going out to colleges along, like, you know, a thirty to forty-minute drive to work with those education majors, to try to bring them in, to do internships, to find part-time jobs. My previous position, I did work in Framingham for 27 years before coming here. I ran a really big extended day program out of one location. We probably, just with our school age program, we probably had about 220 to 240. Pre-pandemic, we were plus 300. So I do have a lot of expertise in what, how it runs. I think the school department has done a fabulous job with it, but the school department's job should be geared towards the education of those students and putting all their energy there where we provide, like, the entertaining and the, and the fun stuff. And I think the rec center can bring more enrichment activities to give these kids more activities to do in their extended day program, so.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Kenny. Thank you. You might want to stay up, stay up here for, for a second. Mr. Hall.
My comment and questions are in the same vein as Mr. Hearn's, as I understood them. I don't believe that it's valid to approve a motion to change, to amend an article of the bylaws when you don't have the exact wording. It's just not valid. Fortunately, according to the motion, you don't need it until next July, and you'll have an annual meeting between now and then when you can approve the motion when everything is spelled out. So it seems to me that the appropriate and valid action is to withdraw this motion from the warrant currently. It doesn't mean any less support for the program, which sounds like a great program. It's just making sure things are done in a legal fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I promised Ms. Guo, and then over there. Wait for the mic, please.
Kathleen Guo, District Six. Are there still children on a waiting list for extended day?
Ms. Stewart, you want to take that?
Teresa Stewart, School Committee member, District Four. So unfortunately, yes. So right now, based on building space, we could have up to 550 students in the schools. When registration opened as of September first, there were 538 students who were registered. There were 322 who were fully enrolled, meaning that every day, every hour that their family requested, we got them in. There were 102 who were partially in the program. So for example, maybe they want it Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and they got Monday, Wednesday. And then there were 71 still fully on the waitlist, so 13% of who enrolled was on the waitlist. It's very tricky to tell you exactly where they are, because again, there's six different schools, there's many different days, there's the two to four, the two to six option. There are the highest waitlist at the Cleveland. That is also where we have the most families enrolled. There is no waitlist at the Bolch. There is a very small waitlist, waitlist at the Callahan.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Follow-up.
Why wait till July first, 2024? Can it not begin sooner?
That's a really great question. So what our MOA currently says, that again, the school committee approved and now goes through the Board of Selectmen, so we have a revolving fund right now under the school system, and the revolving fund would remain through the end of the school year and the end of this fiscal year, so that the tuition that families pay throughout the year continues to go into our current revolving fund. Extended day is a self-sustaining revolving fund. All staff is paid out of the revolving fund. They are not paid out of the operating budget for the town or the school. So the way that it was set up is that John would start to have some, you know, hands-on expertise in the program January one, so that he can start to plan for the takeover of the program July one, which is when the summer programming starts. Do you have a question around that July one date, because the MOA we just signed said March first, Tony? So I'm a little confused about that. But what the school committee was understanding is that a revolving fund for the town side would open up March first, so that when families enroll in March and pay the registration fee for July one on, that fee would then be collected under the recreation revolving fund, so that starting July one, John has the money he needs to run his program, pay his staff.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Mr. Burgess, are you, you're good now? Your question's been answered. Great. Thank you. All right, I, I see the hand waving back there.
Stephen Rogers, District One. So from the way this is worded, is there a reason, is there something that we gain by voting on this now as opposed to waiting to the spring meeting when we have the full text?
Mr. Mizuko, please.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If, sorry, if we do not approve this now, there's no opportunity for the town to collect money into the fund. Even just establishing it, any funds received for the purpose, any grants that would come to the town side, we have to put in the general fund and then close it out to free cash. So every year, we have an annual article authorizing our revolving accounts for a certain level. And if we don't have it set up now, there's nothing that we can do to take any funds in, and we're always collecting funds ahead of time. And again, this is a self-funded program. No taxpayer money is involved in the program, but if we don't establish a revolving fund, we lose flexibility, and we lose the ability of any money we do get. If we have to collect anything before June 30th, we're not able to do that. It becomes general fund revenue. The program runs at a deficit on July first and just becomes a little bit more complicated.
Exactly what you needed to know. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Brody.
Steve Brody, District Four. What is the method that the students are going to be transported or transferred to the recreation department, please? How is it physically going to happen?
The kids, where they're at right now at each site, they're going to stay there. So we, the staff will stay there, the kids will stay there. Nothing really is going to change except for I'm going to be overseeing the, the program as a whole. So I'll be working with the new extended day director, their staff, to make sure that they're following regulations, that everything is going smoothly.
So the students will remain at the school?
Yes.
But you'll be overseeing?
I, I will be on the scene, visiting the sites every week.
Okay, thank you. I do have.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Brody?
Yeah, one, one, I do agree with Mr. Hall and Mr. Hearn, and that maybe the, the article should be amended with the actual bylaw before we vote on it.
Are you, are you making an amendment?
No, that's my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Is this somebody who hasn't? Wait her back.
Jamie Singlis, District One, or District Nine, sorry. Do you have any ideas of whether there'll be any appreciable differences in the program? I heard you say they'll stay at the same locations, but I'm curious about any potential cost changes, or also, I know right now, the rec department runs, like, complimentary half-day programs when extended day doesn't run. I was wondering if there were any changes planned for that.
Mr. Kenny, you want to take that?
Sure. As far as the programming ideas, like, we're going to bring more, like, enrichment activities to those sites. We're already in discussions on what we can do as far as that. As far as like the half-day program, we will continue to do what we're doing and try to open more doors for those kids to give them more access to different programs for those half-days. So we can try to help out as many families as we can is the ideal position that we have right now.
Thank you.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Eric Fleming, District Nine. I'm still confused. I think we've got a great thing we want to do, but I'm concerned that the motion doesn't do it. We want to collect money in, say, March or April into a fund that doesn't yet exist. I don't see how that, if it doesn't, the fund doesn't exist until July first, how can you collect money for it in March? And secondly, if all we've done is added a heading, a title in the bylaw, and there's no description of the bylaw, then how can we have, how can the fund operate if it doesn't have any rules by which it operates? I just don't understand the mechanics here.
Okay, Mr. Fleming, I, I think what we have here is, Mr. Mizuko and Mr. DeLuca, do you have a solution?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If folks would feel more comfortable having the text of that language, it would be a, so we would have to offer a motion to amend. Section one would be titled Recreation Extended Day Program. Section two would be Recreation Extended Day Fees. Section three would be Recreation Director, and section four would be $150,000, which is a spending limit that we don't close out more than. So it's that simple text. I can hand it to the moderator. We can get it up on the screen if you would feel more comfortable doing that. But again, establishing it allows us to collect money if that money starts coming in. If we don't have it established, we have to wait until July first. Money may come in before July first, so we're just trying to get ahead of that potential challenge.
All right, does someone actually want to?
I have a follow-up, but I'd be willing to make that motion. Before I do though, I'd like to ask, is July first the right date, or does it need to start March first or January first?
If you're going to amend it, let's amend it to March first if we're going to include the remainder of the language.
I, I will so move.
Okay, so Mr. Fleming is moving motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Groh on the second. Can we have the motion, please? Somebody bring it up to the clerk. So we have an amendment on the motion by Mr. Fleming, seconded by Mr. Groh, that moved that the town, a vote to amend Article Forty-Six of the bylaws by adding a new Section D entitled Recreation Extended Day Fund. Said revolving fund should begin on July first and include Section One, Recreation Extended Day Program. Section Two, Recreation Extended Day. Mr. Mizuko, I cannot read your handwriting.
So Section One is Recreation Extended Day Program, Recreation Extended Day Fees. Section Three, Recreation Director.
All right, we have to work on Mr. Mizuko's spelling in his next performance review, please. So Section Two is Recreation Extended Day Fees. Section Three is Rec, Recreation Director, and Section Four is the amount of $150,000, which changes it to a money article. So let me get this back down to John, who will get it put up, so we're looking at the whole motion or the amendment.
And correcting the date.
And correcting the date to March 1. Mr. Hall, point of order. Can you wait for a mic, please? Or go to a mic?
John Hall's from 6.
What's your point of order, Mr. Hall?
The point of order is if the section is D, the sub-part should not also be called sections, perhaps paragraphs.
All right, we're going to take a quick pause to look at the bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
They all say section, so we're just copying existing language for our other revolving funds.
Yep. So I'm actually looking at the bylaw. And I'm sure not all town meeting members had their bylaws with them. We do up here. And it is following, each one has a section. Section 1, Section 2, Section 3. So if I look at the existing Council on Aging Revolving Fund, it talks about Section 1 Programs and Activities, Section 2 Departmental Receipts, and Section 3, the Board Department or Officer. So it does follow suit with the bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Hall. On the amendment, Mr. Hearn.
David Hearn, District 4. Madam Moderator, we've heard, but not seen, a, some sort of an answer to parts 1, 2, 3, and 4 that are mentioned in the warrant article, but were not mentioned in the motion. I had raised my hand earlier to suggest that if this was so important, why don't we take it up at the town meeting we anticipate in March and do it right? I really don't understand why whoever created this Article 17 didn't take the time to write it, write the bylaw. In other words, we're being asked, again, to vote on a bylaw that we haven't seen with the barest language. And the concern is that this is a program that is supposed to start July 1 because we're covered up until through June 30, I assume, under the present program. Why can't we take this up in March and let us see it? You know, laws and bylaws written on the fly, on the backs of envelopes or on scrap paper usually don't work out too well. They require some, a little more thought. And I'm just surprised that anybody would bring this to town meeting without having thought to write the bylaw. So this is an important program, I understand that. And depending upon when the funds are collected, and let me ask that, if I may, when are the funds, when is it anticipated that people pay to participate in this program? Is it pay-as-you-go, pay on a monthly basis, or how does it work? If somebody can tell me that, who's running the program?
I think Mr. Mizuka is co-hosting with me now, co-moderating with me. Do we, do we want to address that to the school department because they currently have the program? Or does the town want to answer it because they're taking over the program when they start, anticipate starting to see money?
Well, I mean, Madam Moderator, I don't know because the Yellow Sheet said the school department is exploring transferring this program. So this seems to me to be a thought, the dream that somebody's having, and we're being asked to vote.
All right, Mr. Hearn, we get your point. Thank you. Ms. Stewart, do you want to answer that for the school department? Because I also think that Ms. Stewart talked about the school department actually discussing this at their meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hearn. Teresa Stort, School Committee Member, District 4. So we just had a school committee meeting last night when the Yellow Sheets, when the warrants were written, we weren't sure when we were going to get the MOA done. But as of last night, the school committee did unanimously approve the memorandum of agreement that then goes to the Board of Selectmen on November 28. So technically, we're still exploring it because they haven't signed it yet, but the school committee is committed to it. So what happens right now for the school year, students are enrolled September through June. Payments are due August 1 through May 1. So you pay in August for September, September for October, et cetera. Our MOA with the Rec Center says that they will keep the same fee structure, payment structure, at least for the first year. But what usually happens in March or April is that families will register for the summer program, which would start July 1, and the next school year, which would start in September. So they need this revolving fund in order to be able to collect those registration fees. And then if families do pay in advance, they need that revolving fund. Because if we collect it under the school revolving fund, what will happen on June 30th, when the program ends under the school, once our finance director has said, all bills have been paid, all payroll has been paid, then our revolving fund closes out? That will then go to free cash. But again, free cash isn't certified until the fall. So the Rec Center would not be able to access that money unless next fall, town meeting will appropriate any money that is left over as free cash. Does that answer it?
Is that a follow-up, Mr. Fer?
There is a follow-up. So the August 1 payment is for what period?
September.
For September. So who's paying, how, when are people paying for July and August?
So the summer program's a little bit different. I believe it's six weeks. So the month before typically, but actually, Dr. Taylor, the summer's different. Do they, they pay as they go as well, right? Okay, so they have a deposit in March, which the Rec Center would need to be able to collect.
And this, Madam Moderator, I've heard the selectmen have not yet voted to do this. Maybe somebody's anticipating what they'll do, but.
We, we hear you, Mr. Hearn.
Understand.
Yeah.
Now looking at this for the first time, pretty bare bones. I'm not sure it does the job, but I don't recommend voting legislation this way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hearn. Mr. Bodenhoffer.
Eric Bodenhoffer, District 9. And not to pile on here, but I'm equally confused as to why we don't have a fully drafted bylaw. And looking at what this, excuse me, amendment does, when comparing it to the existing revolving fund bylaws, it makes no sense. I mean, great, we have Section 4, $150,000. What, what does that mean? And Recreation Extended Day Fees? Great. I mean, we've just replaced a single heading with four, well, adding four headings. I think the language we should be voting on should be similar to what exists in the current revolving fund bylaws. It should say things like, you know, the Board Department or Officer authorized to expend these funds. I think that's what we should be voting on.
Thank you, Mr. Bodenhoffer. Mr. Mizuka, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, thank you. I promise I will go back to my seat, Madam Moderator. It's not necessary to establish the language in the bylaw to be able to collect the money. And I think Ms. Stewart explained that very well. If we don't have it, it becomes a general fund money. We don't have those funds to be able to appropriate. We don't have those funds to be able to refund if somebody needed them. So if people, we put the language up, if folks feel more comfortable, that language is up. It is consistent with our other bylaws where the other revolving funds we have are much more general in nature. So the Council on Aging has a revolving fund that takes a lot of different program fees in. The library is an example. They have a revolving fund that encompasses money from a number of different sources. This program is a singular source. The only money that gets paid from people that goes into it is program fees for it. It's, in that sense, simple and straightforward. The individual authorized to expend funds is the director of the department, which is consistent with what we have with the library and the Council on Aging. And the dollar amount is the threshold, you have to set a threshold over which money would close to the general fund anyway. And this is generally a number we use that we don't anticipate closing a year with that much money in it.
Thank you, Mr. Mizuka. Is there a follow-up, Mr. Bodenhoffer?
There is, Madam Moderator. That's all well and good, but Mr. Mizuka will not be present at every reading of these bylaws, right? I understand that this is a single-source fund, but it should say that the funds, it should track the language that exists in the other revolving funds, right? They say things like, all the words that Tony, I'm sorry, Mr. Mizuka just said around those headings are the things that are in all of the other bylaws. Why, why can't we put them in this one? I, I get it that we need to do this so that we can collect funds, but I'm with Mr. Hearn. Why don't we do it right?
Thank you, Mr. Bodenhoffer. Mr. Krasnow. Hold it. Mr. Krasnow, can you wait for the mic and introduce yourself, please?
Will Krasnow, District 4. Is there some way that we can incorporate, put into the amended motion? Could we incorporate by reference, other articles in the bylaws say, you know, the language, I'm not sure exactly how we'd word it, but that the provisions of other revolving funds will apply to this fund with appropriate language changes or something to that effect? Is that a possibility?
Let me, let me ask my co-host. Mr. Mizuka.
To be clear, I said I'd go to my seat after this article. If, the Council on Aging has a very simple, the language is slightly different, but it says, "The programs for, or activities for which the revolving fund may be expended are all programs sponsored by the Council on Aging." That is as generic as can be. This is a little bit more specific. If we would like to make, mirror the Council on Aging language, but for recreation, we can certainly do that. Again, Section 3 of the Council on Aging revolving fund is, "The Board Department or Officer authorized to expel, expend from the fund is the Council on Aging Director." If we feel better that we would have that full language and not just Recreation Director as Section 3, because these sections are outlined in statute that you have to name them, we can certainly do that. That's also a, a simple, a simple amendment. But again, we brought this forward without this because all that's necessary this time is to establish the fund. So that way, if we have to take revenues in, which we anticipate, we are able to do.
May I have a follow-up, Madam Moderator?
Yes, you can.
I just think, the only problem I have with this is all, all you have is a bunch of headings. I mean, you can't have a bylaw with headings. You have to have some text. That's, I think it's a minimum.
Thank you, Mr. Krasnow. In the back.
Norman Boishman, District 1. Madam Moderator, would it be possible to move this article to the end after Article 22 so that perhaps there'd be a chance that more explicit language could be written in during that period of time?
Well, we can't, we're in the, unfortunately, we're in the middle of an amendment. But what we can do is take a short recess while town council and the general manager put their heads together to see if there is language to amend the amendment, which our rules will provide for. Mr. Mizuka and Mr. DeLuca.
Take one minute.
All right, we're going to take, we're going to take a two minutes so everybody can get up and stretch for a second. Mr. Hearn, point of order. Wait for a mic, please.
Madam Moderator, David Hearn, District 4. We are not talking about amending an amendment. The amendment hasn't been voted on yet. So if they want to try to recast it, but, and present it that way, we haven't yet voted on it.
Okay, good point. Eric, would you like to work with, Mr. Fleming, would you like to work with Mr. Mizuka and Mr. DeLuca on an amendment to your motion, amending, actually changing your amendment? Looks like he's willing, Mr. Mizuka. Everybody can take a two-minute stretch break. All right, Mr. Fleming, get you a mic. Come right here. I understand that you would like to amend your amendment, you'd like to change your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm offering a friendly amendment to modify the motion to be as shown on the screen.
So basically, you're accepting the friendly amendment?
Correct.
And is there, who's seconded? Mr. Groh, I think you agree that as well? Thumbs up. All right. Ms. Fleming, anything on the amendment?
Nothing further.
Okay. All right. So we have an amendment on the floor. Let me give everyone a second to read it. It now reflects all the language that was actually in the warrant. Plus. All right. On the amendment, Mr. Hall.
Do you want to reinsert July 1 as the earliest date that expenditures can be made? Because that was in the original warrant.
I, I think that we already talked about actually changing that and, and it being asked to be changed by the body, so. All right. I'm going to take this, take the amendment for a vote. All those in favor of the amendment, which is up on the screen, which again, is to establish a new bylaw, a new revolving fund as part of Bylaw 46, Article 46 of our bylaws, sorry, for Recreation Extended Day Revolving Fund. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The amendment passes. That brings us to the original motion, adding this language that you just all approved in the amendment. So that the town vote to amend Article 46 of the bylaws, including the amendment as printed in the warrant. All those in favor, please say aye. All that opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Great team effort. Thank you, everybody. Must have been Mr. Lane's Super Bowl reference. All right. Article 18, which is being brought jointly by the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom. Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. That the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13D, to authorize the town to establish a reserve fund for the future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences due to any employee or full-time officer of the town upon the termination of the employee's or full-time officer's employment, and further to designate the town accountant to authorize payment from such fund, and further to appropriate 1.5 million from free cash to capitalize the fund.
And Ms. Bodenhoffer, I know you're seconding, and I believe you are speaking on the motion as well?
Yes, Madam Moderator. There's a slide. Okay. So what is a compensated absences liability? That's the first thing we need to talk about. Every employer that offers vacation time and sick time will have a compensated absences liability. It's the vacation time and sick time that has been accrued but has not yet been paid out. So that when, and specifically what we're talking about here is employee separation costs. When an employee leaves and they are entitled to be paid out for their unused vacation time, in certain circumstances, they're also entitled to be paid out for their unused sick time. That is a liability for the town, a financial liability for the town. The total town liability for compensated absences is approximately $4 million. Now, we're never going to have to pay $4 million in one year because that would only happen if everyone quit all at once. So, but just when, every year, you can go on the town website and you can see the, the financial reports for the town, and there is this compensated absences liability line item in there as, that counts against our assets. So, next slide, please. Compensated absences are something that are somewhat unpredictable from year to year, depending on who happens to retire that year, who happens to leave that year. So similar to how there are special rules for snow and ice, you know, the state allows towns to overspend the snow and ice line item because they know that's unpredictable. The state allows towns to treat compensated absences in a special way. They allow you They allow you to create a reserve fund that you put money into, and then when you have compensated absences costs, you can use this fund to pay that. This has the, um, several advantages. One advantage is that this money is now, counts as one of our reserves, and it financially will, is an asset that helps offset that liability that the town has. So in that way, it will strengthen the financial position of the town and may help improve or maintain our bond rating. It will also stabilize an unpredictable expense from year to year. And on the general government side, it will also help solve an administrative problem where they wind up doing a lot of transfers at the year-end, because these compensated absences hit the individual salary line. So if you have a small department with, say, only three employees, and someone retires and they have to get paid out for a couple of months' worth of salary, they don't have the money in that budget to cover that expense. And so then they have to transfer a lot of money around in the end. So instead, what would happen is the money would be drawn from this compensated absences fund. Next slide, please. The compensated expense, absence expenses vary from year to year. Typically, they're in the range of $300,000 to $500,000. So the FinCom has unanimously recommended that we start this fund with 1.5 million dollars in free cash. As I said Monday night, we have a big windfall of free cash this year. FinCom was looking for an opportunity for how can we use this money to set ourselves up well in coming fiscal years. This was something that was suggested to us by our town accountant. It was, um, also, we discussed it with our financial advisor, and he said that this would be a helpful thing to do for the town. It's a nice way to set ourselves up, to save some money, put some money aside for some expenses that we know are coming in the future. So the plan would be to put 1.5 million dollars in free cash now, and then that would be plenty of money to cover the annual needs, but then we would contribute annually to this fund to replenish it. Last slide. FinCom supports creating this reserve and funding it with 1.5 million dollars in free cash. The Board of Selectmen has also voted in favor. The School Committee is in favor of creating the account, but discussions continue about the details of implementation for the schools. The schools currently have a budget line item called employee separation costs, and we're trying to figure out all the, how it's going to work to, if they want to roll into using this fund as well. But they support creating the fund.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhoffer. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Chen.
Michael Chen, District Five. Two sort of related questions, the first being when this fund would sort of be available to draw down from? And then the second, if you can just comment on, related to that, if this applies to the town but not the school, will we reap the same benefits from a liability perspective when our bond rating is evaluated if the school has not chosen to participate? And if that's the case, why not wait until the school sort of aligns to create an overall fund that encompasses the school employees as well?
Mr. Mazuko.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'll take the, the second question first. It does help count against our liability. Remember, the distinction between schools and towns doesn't exist in a financial sense in the rest of the world. That's sort of a, an us discussion. Our audits are looked at as this corporate entity has a liability of $4 million, and there's a dollar amount going against it. They don't care if it's a school, town, police, it's all one physical liability to them. And then in terms of the interpret, the, when it would begin using it, Town Meeting makes it available as of 10 days after the appropriation vote. The FinCom still hasn't decided whether it would be starting next fiscal year or for the end of this fiscal year. Coming in May, we will have some compensated absences to withdraw from, so the FinCom would have to have a discussion with the other boards between now and then. But nothing would be drawn down until a subsequent vote by the FinCom has been taken.
If I may, Madam Moderator, through you. I guess what is the average spend from the school's side for that employee separation? Because I, I understand your point, Mr. Mazuko, I'm just trying to understand. When someone looks at our overall liabilities, if the proportion is overwhelmingly from the school's side, whether this will have an actual impact?
Mr. Mazuko, can?
Thank you. The, the, remember, teachers don't get vacation time the way that, for instance, a police officer or firefighter does, so the dollar amount is significantly lower. But from an audit perspective, there's no distinction between town and schools. We have 1,100 employees, and they don't care where that liability lies. It's a dollar amount that the town has. So one department, for instance, not participating in it, doesn't have an impact on money against the liability.
If you want, Ms. Stewart, do you want to further define the school's position on this?
Teresa Storit, School Committee, District Four. So you asked for some numbers. So currently fiscal year '24, the budget that we're in, we have budgeted $56,400. We are able to budget it in a little bit of a different way than the general government is. All of our union contracts have clauses. We have five different unions under us, so they vary a little bit union to union. But for example, in our Teachers Union, which is the largest union, they have to tell us by February 1, the year prior to when they are going to retire. So we are allowed to budget what that cost for unpaid sick time will be. That's where you, we get these numbers. And you can find these numbers in the Town Meeting book. So again, for this current fiscal year, it's 56,400. For fiscal year '23, last year, it was 86,922. For fiscal year '22, it was 92,776. For fiscal year '21, it was 68,081. And for fiscal year '20, it was 44,660.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Kevin Connolly, District Seven. I understand the concept of it, but what was the procedure before this? And why are we correcting a problem? Or was it a problem to begin with? Or we were just the money? The money is there, and we're looking to solve a problem?
Mr. Mazuko has that one?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, yes, I believe we are looking to solve a problem. Every town in Massachusetts, every public and private organization has this liability on their books. And it's more the vacation side than the school side, because you have to pay vacations wages. So as the Finance Commission's been looking at, what can strengthen our financial position? Where can we put money in reserves that makes sense when we have it? What are good financial decisions we can make? This is money you can put against a liability. We have lots of them, and of course, you could put money in a lot of different areas, but this is something that our auditors have repeatedly pulled up, that this is probably somewhere you should have some money against. And our financial advisors have agreed as well, that, you know, this is something you can do. It has a positive impact, and it's achievable, whereas, you know, we could put money towards our OPEB liability. That's an enormous number, and a million and a half dollars isn't likely to make much of a difference. So it's solving a problem, but I don't know if I'd use the word problem as much as a condition that exists in every town, city, county, organization in the country, and this is a positive financial move. The type of thing you do when you have higher than regular anticipate, or higher than regular surplus revenue, how could we be somewhat conservative about what we're doing with that revenue and help out going forward? And this is a, a good idea. The auditors have mentioned it several years in a row. We're finally in a position to be able to do it.
Mr. Connolly, you good?
I'm good.
Way in the back.
Hi, Jennifer Landergan, District Nine. Is the intention to keep this fund at a million, a million and a half every year? So you'd mentioned we'd replenish it annually.
Ms. Bodenhoffer?
Thank you. Our goal is to keep it in that neighborhood, but this is something that's unpredictable somewhat year to year. So the idea would be, you'd look back at the last three to five years and say, well, the average number every, average number over that time was, say, $450,000. So we'll put $450,000 in it this coming year. But then maybe we wind up drawing, withdrawing $300,000, or maybe we wind up withdrawing $575,000. But we would try to keep it in that neighborhood.
Ernie Pachakowski, District Nine. So I just heard the schools say that this year their line item, line budget for this is 56,000. And on the, one of the previous screens, it says we average about $300,000 to $400,000 a year in payouts. I understand they don't have vacation, but they get a lot of sick time and, you know, retirement. So I'm assuming that that line item from the school department will go away if this is all gonna get paid out of this one fund, right? If all, if all town employees payouts are gonna come out of this one fund, then that, that line item will go away, and that 56,000 would be thrown into this fund, because they won't need it, because their, their payouts are gonna come out of this fund, correct?
Mr. Mazuko.
So the short answer is?
Am I missing something? I'm probably missing something.
It, it, it could, but remember that that's probably a next fiscal year budget decision. What we're really looking at is the state allows us to treat this the same way we treat workers' comp and unemployment. There are liabilities that you have, and you're able to establish a fund and centrally pay out of that amount for where that liability is, because it's a legal cost that you bear. So it's actually the same exact way, the same exact mechanism that we use to fund unemployment and workers' comp. We just haven't had the money to start with this. And unemployment and workers' comp don't end up having the sizable balances that the compensated absence could have. So it's the same statutory framework, we're just finally able to check box number three, if you will.
Thank you, Ms. Mazuko. Ms. Homewood?
Debbie Homewood, District Three. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Bodenhoffer for explaining what that says up there. And I would love, we used to put the motions up on the board, they'd read what you people had written, and then somebody would explain to us what it actually said. Thank you, Mrs. Bodenhoffer.
Thank you, Ms. Homewood. Uh, Ms. Smith, are you still?
Yeah, I don't know.
Jody Smith, District Five. Once money is withdrawn, where is the money going to come from to replenish the account? Is that coming from shared costs, or is that gonna come from free cash each year?
Ms. Bodenhoffer?
That will be a decision of the Budget Balancing Committee as we go forward. At this point, we are expecting that it may come from shared costs. But as I said, we are in the process of having a bigger conversation about how do we allocate money going forward, post the end of the override pledge.
Follow-up, please, Madam Moderator?
Yes, please, Ms. Smith.
My other, my other question is, if it comes out of shared costs, then that means it comes off the top, so whatever revenue the town brings in, that shared cost comes off the top, thus reducing what would be shared between the schools and the town. Am I correct?
That is how we handle shared costs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Groh?
Nicholas, Nicholas Groh, District Seven. We just had a big discussion about establishing a fund and how it had to have all this structure, but this doesn't seem to have that structure, so I'm confused now.
It's a good question, although it's a very different kind of fund. Ms. Bodenhoffer, do you want to take that?
So what we just established for extended day was a revolving fund. This is a state reserve fund, and it specifically is authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13D. So we are just basically accepting the, the provision that the state has already set up.
Follow-up, Madam Moderator?
Go ahead.
Uh, through you. The structure of who divvies these funds and who appropriates these funds and who administers this fund is all part of that? Is that what you're saying? All part of that general language?
The Mass. General Law.
The Mass. General Law doesn't specifically speak to who, um, who, how the funds are appropriated, but as Mr. Mazuko said, it's similar to the comp, the unemployment and things like that, so Mr. Mazuko can probably answer that question better.
All right. Mr. Mazuko?
So under the statute, all that's allowed to pay out of it is legally sick and vacation payouts for employees. So we can't charge other expenses to it. This is the kind of stuff the auditors love to look at. All of our, just like any modern payroll system, everyone has a pay code for whatever type of pay they receive. You retire, you get paid three sick days, it's Code 555 for vacation days. So the town accountant's one who is the statutory authority to ensure that any payout is accurate, and you can only charge payouts upon leavement to it, upon leave to it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Teresa Storit, School Committee, District Four. There's some really great questions being asked, Mr. Pachakowski, Ms. Smith. And the questions you're asking are questions the School Committee has. And part of why, although we're supporting that the fund should be created, we have not yet decided if we are going to participate in it with the school employees or continue to budget with it in our line item budget. We have not made that decision yet, and you should know that, because there is a lot to figure out. And share costs is something that every year, the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen have an agreement around. Where share costs go, how it's allocated, how it impacts our budget, how it's reported at end of year to DESI. So this is a big topic that we have to figure out. It has not yet been figured out, which is why the School Committee is not yet committing to be a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Seeing nothing more, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of establishing the Compensated Balances Reserve Fund per the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13D, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Simple majority, passes. Moving on to Article 19. Motion by the FinCom, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $2 million be transferred from free cash and appropriated to the Override Stabilization Fund.
And that's seconded by Ms. Sullivan, and on the motion, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
This is the $2 million that we talked about Monday night, that this is part of honoring the Town Meeting vote of May 2022, when we originally planned to take $2 million from the Forbes proceeds and move it to override stabilization. So we just spent, Monday night, we spent $2 million on the Forbes proceeds on roads, and now we're in, kind of at a switch, we're taking $2 million from free cash and moving that to override stabilization. So the FinCom has unanimously recommended this motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none? This is a majority. Let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of $2 million to be transferred from free cash to the Override Stabilization Fund, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Article 20 is a motion by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved that the town, which previously appropriated $5.7 million by vote of the 2023 November 13th, Special Town Meeting, under Article 8, Motion 2, to make repairs at Hawes Pool, which is dedicated to active recreational purposes under Mass. General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, authorize the General Manager to file on behalf of the town any and all grants deemed necessary under the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Grant Program, and the town be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the town to affect said project.
And Mr. Donnelly is seconding. Mr. Lane, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Um, this is a housekeeping article to accept a grant for $500,000 to offset the costs of the Hawes Pool. I've been told we have a very good chance of getting it, which is great, so a yes vote here just allows the town to accept the money.
So, Mr. Lane, what you're saying is the, the town previously appropriated the 5.7 million. We did that on Monday night, I believe?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
As part of the capital budget? And this is a procedural, uh, a motion to basically allow grant proceeds to be accepted?
That's correct.
All right. Got that right. Anything on the motion? Seeing none? Let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 20, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Again, a majority there. Article 21 by the FinCom, Ms. Bodenhoffer.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $27,099.20 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purpose of paying grant corrections as a free cash and appropriated for the purpose of paying grant corrections as referenced in the Yellow Sheet.
Being seconded by Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Bodenhoffer on the motion.
FinCom unanimously recommends this motion. It's to correct inadvertent change that happened. Grant money was somewhat inadvertently transferred to free cash or closed out to free cash, so now we need to replenish that grant. It's a housekeeping thing.
Housekeeping, and also, I guess I would say, correcting an error that a grant was swept into free cash when it shouldn't have been. And I think it's a school department grant, as I remember? Okay. So this is to just put the money back. All right. Seeing no discussion, let's put it to a vote. Simple majority. That's the sum of $27,099.20 transferred from free cash and appropriated for the grant correction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Article 22, I must say, my personal favorite, unpaid bills. This will be a nine-tenths vote. Ms. Bodenhoffer, motion on the article.
Moved by the Finance Commission that the sum of $19,063.20 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of prior fiscal years as referenced in the Yellow Sheet.
And seconded by Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Bodenhoffer on the motion.
The FinCom unanimously recommends this motion.
And again, all the different unpaid bills are listed in your Yellow Sheet. There's quite, quite, quite a list. Ms. Taylor?
Jean Taylor, District 8. I know it's $19,000. We've just given out, how many millions? And I'm asking a question. What I'd like to know is the Angel Pension Group, there's three, three listings here. Don't we pay into the state system? Why, why would we be, through you, Madam Chair, whoever could answer it? Why would we be having another pension group?
Mr. Mizuko?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a company that does compliance on our pension plans. They're like an addendum to our audit for reports we have to file, and we use a third-party vendor, and they don't like to get us bills on time.
And then Pierce Davis and Perittano, and another Sprague Operating, they're LLC. Don't we have Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane as town council?
Mr. Mizuko?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Townwide, if you include all the town and schools, there's probably a dozen different firms we use. We use a lot of different specialty firms. This one in particular is a firm that was, we used in conjunction with our insurance company from litigation a couple of years ago over the airport. And we just haven't been paying their bills because we just have been ignoring them, I guess. And they'd like to get paid at some point, but they're like a compliance firm that we use very little, and they, they just, I think they come in and nobody recognizes it, so it doesn't get paid, but they finally ask to get paid. Sprague Operating Resources is the vendor that we do our gas bills through, and the bill comes from them. And sometimes they just come too late in the year, they don't get paid in time, and then we have to have a strict cutoff under the statute to be able to pay them.
Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. Again, it's nine-tenths. All those in favor that the sum of $19,063.20 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of the prior fiscal year, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I'm going to say that that's unanimous. Madam Clerk? All right. Before I entertain a motion to dissolve, just again, want to thank everybody that made this town meeting possible, the general manager's office, Madam Clerk's office, Team Rocks out there, the finance department, all the custodians, buildings, and grounds. And a special shout-out to Kevin Broderick, our mic runner, who did a yeoman's job tonight. And also to NCM for fabulous coverage. Hopefully, use the camera that makes me look 15 pounds thinner. Thank you. And all of you, extremely productive and very successful session. I really think this is town meetings at its best, asking questions is why we're here, having the discussions that we had, writing, writing motions through amendments is also part of it as well. So thank you all for your participation. With that, Mr. Connolly, do you have a motion?
Motion to dissolve.
All right. And we'll have, who are we going to have? We're going to have Mr. McFarland on that one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. See you in March, everyone.